Okay, it's seven o'clock. Is the clerk's office ready to begin?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, then I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Urbana City Council for Monday, January tenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Percy?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilken?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
And Barima, could you please admit Sheila Dodd, staff member Sheila Dodd, as a panelist? Okay, next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the January third, two thousand and twenty-two meeting.
I move approval of the minutes from January third.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Shandra, submitted by Mary Alice. Are there any substantial changes, corrections? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
I had a quick question, actually. There was, there were two meetings last week, right? And so this is just one of the two, so I imagine we'll have the other one later then. Is that right? Yes. Okay. That's all, thanks.
Okay.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Percy?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next item is additions to the agenda. We don't have any additions. Next item, our presentations and public input. We'll begin with the presentations, and the first is the annual audit presentation by HR Finance. And we have Shannon Clark, Elizabeth Hannan, and Joe Lightcap. Is there anyone else that needs to be admitted?
No one else.
Okay, thank you. All right, go ahead, please.
Yeah, hi. So I would like to introduce Joe Lightcap, who is a partner with Baker Tilly, our external financial audit firm. Before Joe reviews our FY two thousand and twenty-one audit reports, I just wanted to mention a few items. So Joe will go over the reports in more detail. However, I just wanted to point out that the financials being presented tonight are on a different basis of accounting than the quarterly financials and budget reports you use to say throughout the year. Generally accepted accounting principles and government auditing standards govern the presentation of our financial statements in the annual report. So these reports are prepared on the modified and full accrual basis of accounting. Other reports you receive throughout the year are primarily on the cash basis of accounting. The main difference between these accounting methods is when revenues, expenditures, and liabilities are recognized due to the measurement focus of the financial statements being presented. Also, there'll be differences in the way funds are presented. For example, the general fund and the governmental fund statements include other small funds for presentation purposes. And then for your reference, all the reports that are going to be presented tonight by Joe are available on the city's website under the finance section. And then lastly, I'd just like to thank the city's accounting team and auditing staff at Baker Tilly for their hard work on this audit. This work is done over many months, and it was once again another challenging year due to the pandemic. However, again, we found ways to work effectively during this time. So now I'll hand it over to Joe, who will present the FY two thousand and twenty-one annual audit reports.
Thank you, Shannon. Thank you, everyone, for having me tonight. Before I get started, I would like to thank HR and finance. As Shannon mentioned, this, this process does occur over many months, and we ask many questions and ask for a lot of supporting documentation. And the city is always very quick and thorough with their responses. That is, that is much appreciated and helps, helps get through the audit in a, in a much more expedient way than it, than it could be, for sure. There are three reports that I'll be going over tonight: the audited financial statements, the reporting and insights letter, and the single audit. I'll be presenting at a very high level, but if you have any questions at any time, please stop me. I will share my screen and show some of the pages through the report. These are the reports that, that you do have the links to. And as I said, I'll only be hitting at a high level and only marking a few pages. But if you've gone through it and you've seen other pages and other information that you want me to go to, I'd be happy to do that as well. So first off, this is the annual comprehensive financial report. Once again, it's a, the, the city has issued this comprehensive report, and it is more comprehensive than what is required under accounting standards. It has additional narrative information in the front regarding the city and some policies, as well as ten-year trend information in the back in the statistical section to give you a good idea of how the city's done over time. First page I want to go to is page one. It's the independent auditor's report. We once again issued a clean or unmodified opinion on the city's financial statements. It's the highest level of assurance you can get from your outside auditors and states that the financial information presented is reasonable in all material respects and can be reasonably relied upon by an outside user of the financial statements. There were no new accounting standards issued during the year, so if we were to compare this year's report to last year's, the, the format would look very much the same, although the, the numbers, of course, would be changed and updated for the year. Part of the report that I would like to point out starts on page four, Management's Discussion and Analysis. This is part of the report written by management that discusses what happened during the year financially compared to the prior year. So if you're, if you're wondering why some, some funds increased or decreased or net position or certain liabilities, there's a good chance you could find some information here that would, that would be helpful to, to see what happened during the year. It's, it's some of the more easier to read information in this hundred and seventy-nine page document. So, you know, this is a good spot to go for, for that good understanding. Jump in a little bit. As Shannon mentioned, there's, there's a couple of different bases of accounting presented in the financial statements. This statement of net position is on full accrual basis of accounting, so it has all of your assets. You can see capital assets, and it has long-term liabilities as well. So this is, is very much a long-term perspective. I mean, it groups all of the funds into two different columns, governmental activities and business-type activities. It also has a column for the library. You see this ends in net position. This is the income statement, the statement of activities on the full accrual basis. The governmental funds, governmental activities, net position increased by about seventeen point seven million. Business-type activities went down by about six hundred thousand dollars. And the library went up about five hundred thousand dollars. For the governmental activities, that's seventeen point seven million. It's mainly due to fund-level gains that we'll see in a little bit, about six point eight million dollars. The investment in capital assets by the city for the year increased net position by about four point nine million dollars. And the impact of net pension liabilities that increased net position by about four point nine million dollars. It's all, all good trends during fiscal year twenty-one. When we, we talk about fund-level financial statements, this is the income statement for at the fund levels. This is the modified accrual basis. This is more of a short-term perspective, has more current assets and liabilities versus the long-term perspective we just saw. On this modified accrual basis, fund-level financial statements, fund balance increased by about six point eight million dollars. The general fund was six point four million of that. Vehicle and equipment replacement fund had about a one point nine million dollar decrease on planned capital projects during the year. And all of the non-major funds went up about two million dollars. If you are interested in, in what, in all the funds that makes that number up, there, there's a schedule in the back that has each of the non-major funds that you can see on how, how individual funds of the city did during the year. One of the kind of things we like to look at is, is reserves. This year, the general fund fund balance has about eight and a quarter months in reserves as compared to about six and a half months in the prior year. So obviously, this is a, this is a point in time at June thirtieth. This is plans, you have your plans on how to spend the fund balance, but this is a good point in time and a good comparison of the year and how it did, how the general fund and the other governmental funds did. One of the, the areas that's been interesting, so to say, over the years is the net pension liability. The city has three different plans where we look at pension liabilities, IMRF, police and fire. This year, the IMRF net pension liability actually turned into a net pension asset, so your assets in IMRF were, were in excess of the future potential liabilities, so you had about a one point two million dollar net pension asset. The police pension, the net pension liability was nineteen point, well, about twenty million dollars, which is also down from twenty-six point eight million dollars from the prior year. As you're probably aware, fiscal year twenty-one was a very good year for interest rate returns, and the police, the police's return was about twenty-one point three percent. This is obviously, again, a point in time, market values fluctuate up and down, but, but a good trend and hopefully something that, that can continue. And the fire, firefighters' pension fund, the net pension liability is only a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, which is extremely good. You should be, should be very grateful that that's the number. It's a lot lower than, than what I've seen in many other municipalities. So again, the firefighters' fund had about a twenty-five point seven percent return on investments for the year. I am going to skip, or, well, go, the rest of this financial information has a lot of good notes, the financial statements, you see a lot of detail on, let's say, the net pension liability, why it went up or why it went down during the year. Other liabilities and assets, you can see the changes. And as I mentioned, there's, there's long-term trend information in the back as well as budget actual information, so you can see how well the, the city did financially related to how you plan to do in the budget. With that, those are all my planned remarks on the financial statements. Take pause and answer any questions before moving to the next report or, or save for the end, however you'd like to proceed. Okay.
Any questions for Joe?
We have one.
Sharice?
I don't know if this is pertinent right now. Are we getting this, or did we, were we supposed to have gotten this in our packet this week? This particular report? Anybody?
It, Sharice, it's Elizabeth. There was a memo in your packet that included the links to all of the reports. It's, it's kind of been our practice that the reports are very long. We don't necessarily copy them for every person, but I know if you would like to have hard copies, I think we have a couple of extras available, and Shannon can help with that.
Okay, just, I just wanted to know, apparently there's something I missed. I'm sorry.
Grace?
If I can just add a quick comment to that, too. I also took a second to find it. Did find it now. I was trying to find it just a direct internet search, so just wanted to clarify for the public. It's on the city page. I know you mentioned it, but under annual comprehensive financial report or the Urbana website slash ACFR, if anyone else is looking for it directly from the internet.
Thank you. Any other questions on this part of the presentation? Okay, let's move on.
Okay. The next report I'll be going over is the reporting and insights from the two thousand and twenty-one audit report. This is the financial highlights, and it satisfies a few different auditing standards. I guess one thing I do, you know, like to point out, especially if, if you hadn't had a chance to look at the financial statements, yeah, my, my contact information is in this report, and, and should you have any questions, either with the financial statements, with our audit or anything throughout the year, we're happy to, to answer those questions. We do ultimately work for city council. While we work with management to perform the audit, we work for city council, so, you know, there's, there's definitely any questions or concerns. We're, we're happy to address those at any point during the year. The, this report does, as mentioned, covers a few different areas: our responsibilities, management's responsibilities, audit status, audit approach and results, and then it kind of looks a little bit forward into challenges, opportunities, potential accounting changes coming down that could impact the city and future audit standards, accounting standards. And then additional information, the appendix, management's representation letter, so some of the bullet points, some of the things that management provided to us during the audit, and the two-way communication, the two-way communication being the part where, you know, we ask city council if there's any questions, and it kind of, it gives a little bit about, a little bit of information about the audit. And there's a few questions in there that, if anything piques your interest and you, you want to discuss with us, we're happy to do so. The, if you were to, well, i- is reading this letter, I think you would, you would come across, you would come away with, with a very kind of important message. And this is really, this year especially, a boilerplate type of report. This report is really geared towards letting you know of any questions or concerns that we have with the audit or any kind of really negative things that, unfortunately, our reports are, are designed to give, you know, problem areas versus all the kudos that the city and its management deserves. So when you read through this, it'll say that there were no disagreements performing the audit, no concerns with management integrity and things like that. So it's a very, it's a very good letter in that regard. One of the, the areas I do want to point out is the internal control matters. So every year, we look at internal controls to determine the nature, timing, and extent of our audit procedures, not to provide an opinion on internal controls, but if there was something in our, in our review that we felt city councils should be aware of, we would have those comments in this letter. I'm happy to report this year that, that there are no comments for city councils' consideration. In the past, there's been some comments for improvement, and I actually went back all the way to when we started as the auditors, back to two thousand and fourteen, and there were, there were quite a few comments, and and that's, well, pretty much the time Elizabeth joined the city, and ever since, there's been a great improvement, a great focus on, on hiring the, the right employees to, to improve internal controls, rate systems, to, to kind of improve everything in that regard. So it's been a tremendous effort over the years to, to get to this point where there are no internal control matters reported to city council. So again, that's a great improvement, not something that we, we see at all of our clients. Yes, with that report, and there's kind of all the comments I had on that report, the, the final report I had is the single audit. I want to actually bring it up on the screen. It's pretty, it's pretty straightforward. This year, here, we, we audited two federal programs, CDVG and the coronavirus relief fund. Happy to report there that there were no findings over internal controls or compliance related to those programs. So again, a good report for the city. Yes, with that, I would take any questions on the audit results letter, single audit, or anything else?
Any questions on this part of the presentation? Grace?
Thank you for the presentation. I appreciate that, and to our staff for having a group audit. I was trying to find this letter you're showing us. Do we have that? No.
I, I believe you do have that as well.
It, it is on that memo saying, that says FY two thousand and twenty-one audit report, and it's under the same section as the annual financial report. So it's that very first link that you found, phrase, that memo is right underneath it on the internet.
Oh, this called communication letter?
Yeah, yeah, that's it, communication.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. I just wanted to express my thanks to Elizabeth Hannan, Shannon Clark, and Sheila Dodd for the extraordinary work they've put into this and the excellence in reporting. And it's no small thing to get the Government Finance Officers Association, the GFOA Certificate of Achievement, for the first time in two thousand and twenty, I think the first time ever, Urbana received this for their report in two thousand and twenty. And they've submitted the report, this report for two thousand and twenty-one, and I have high expectations that we'll receive that recognition again. So that's a huge accomplishment for our financial services team and the people in grants management, Sheila and Braden, who manage the millions of dollars that, that flow through the city. So I just wanted to say thank you to all. And to, 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 this was done, of course, in the context of COVID and all the other extra work that it involved, so it's an especially significant recognition. Thank you very much. We'll move on to the second presentation, which is Sanford Hess, I believe. Yes, he's here. And this is on the city of Urbana network security.
Good evening. I'm here to talk about everybody's favorite topic of network security. I have presentations, so let me share my screen. So I don't come to council to talk about network security a lot, but this seemed like a good opportunity to do so. You're going to be seeing a budgetary request from me soon for some spending, and so we thought it would be a good idea to pull back and give some context about what we've done in the past few years, where we stand and where we're going. And I'm going to try to keep this relatively brief, but I'm happy to answer questions afterwards. So I don't want to sound alarmist, but we are always at risk for a disaster. That is a true statement constantly. One of the ways that people think of when we talk about network security is malicious hacking from the outside. The more likely scenario is accidental clicking by somebody through social engineering. Or we should also be thinking not just of electronic issues, but also physical ones. So a tornado, fire, flood, because the IT room is in the basement. Any one of these could take down our, our network infrastructure and cripple the city. And I like to think about myself sometimes as a professional skeptic, so I think about when this is going to happen. I don't say if this is going to happen, because, to be honest, not only, not only will it happen, it has happened. We've had problems, and we will continue to have problems. So our goal, whenever we're discussing these areas, is to secure what we have, so that if there is a problem, it's locked down. We want to recover quickly, and most importantly, we want to minimize the loss of work across the rest of the city. Because departments are more and more dependent upon technology in many ways. And we know what internet outage or a network outage or an email outage can do and to cripple everybody else's ability to, to get their work done. So in talking about network security, I've divided this into four main components, if you want to think about it this way. We have data, we have desktops, we have connectivity, and we have servers. And I'm going to talk about each of these briefly. Data is the information that we have, whether that is email data, whether that is the files that are produced as part of running the city, whether it's something like the, the fiscal report we just saw presented on. Whatever it is, that's the data that we have. And our goal is to lose as little data as possible when there's a problem. Because ultimately, if there is a problem, something like ransomware, we're going to be recovering from our backup files. And so we want to make sure that when we recover from backups, there's as little data loss as possible due to the time of when the last backup was. So some of the things we've done recently to improve on this, in two thousand and nineteen, we started doing backups to the cloud. Before that, we wrote backups to tape. And actually, writing backups to tape is something we still do, because when you're thinking about all the possible things that can go wrong, you also have to think about massive internet outages. So it is good to have local backups as well, but we try to push things offsite. We made an effort during the pandemic to shrink how much data we have by having some of our departments take the opportunity to go back and go through the files they've inherited. You have to remember, in many departments, we're talking about twenty or thirty years of inherited files that are getting passed down. And there was a lot of room for us to shrink that down. One of the reasons we wanted to do that was, was to also move forward with centralizing our users' data. Up until recently, most users had their data stored on their local computers, which is a standard practice, or at least was a standard practice, but actually would be harder for us to restore people's files in the, in the situation of a problem. And really, all, all of this is leading up to what we're working on right now. We've adopted a new backup tool, and we're moving towards more frequent backups. We used to back up weekly, now we back up nightly. It is my goal that for critically-used data, we'll be backing up several times a day, so that even if things go down, we're talking about only losing a couple hours worth of work. That's a goal. We're not quite there yet. So with desktops, and here I'm talking about usually the computers that are on people's desks, either their own individual computer or shared computers. Our goal again is to reduce downtime. So when there are problems, and problems do happen, we want to make sure we can get people working again. One of the things we've been doing in this area, have done for many years now, is security training. Because the best protection we have at a desktop level is having our users make good decisions. And many of you on council have also had the pleasure of taking our security training. Something that we do on a regular basis, and we're following best practice guidelines with that. We've also rolled out an endpoint detection and response, which is really a much more muscular version of an antivirus. So that's something that we rolled out in two thousand and twenty. It helps with protection of the possible event on a computer. It can help find it and stop it, but it's not a perfect solution. Another effort that's going on with us right now is we're doing a PC replacement across the city. We hired an apprentice who's working with us for, since October, and will be with us until May or June. So that effort is really going on, on a constant basis right now. We're putting standardized images on people's computers, which makes them easier to restore, and we're also putting in place solid-state drives for people who didn't have them, which again is all about speed, because a solid-state drive is simply much faster than the old-style hard drives. The next area is connectivity. So connectivity is our ability to send information back and forth, either between buildings or through the internet, or to the internet, or down from the internet. So some of the things we've done here, we increased the size of our internet connection in two thousand and seventeen. In two thousand and eighteen, we put direct fiber connections to the two fire stations, the north and the south, that did not have fiber in the past. We upgraded our firewall in two thousand and nineteen, and actually, that really was a huge benefit for us during the pandemic, because it was able to allow us to do the work-from-home model. We've upgraded our fiber connections as well. A little fun fact, it's been long enough now since some of the UCTB work started that some of the early fiber connections that were created were actually old enough to start to degrade. So we went through and we reinforced those reconnected and have a more stable connection to the fiber. We also split off our Wi-Fi from the main network onto a secondary network, which also functions as our emergency network if we needed to. And it's even less critical now, because in two thousand and twenty-one, we put in place a secondary internet connection as part of our phone project. So we have redundant connections to the internet as well. And finally, our servers. So the servers are the part of the network that are actually powerful machines that are running our email or are storing our network files or running some of our core software. Up until two thousand and eighteen, we were replacing those servers on a, approximately every five- to seven-year basis. We have not replaced any of the servers since two thousand and eighteen, because at that point in time, we started talking about a new model for the network. In two thousand and twenty, we rolled out an intrusion detection point of contact. It's something that sits between us and the internet, and it looks at all the traffic that's going through both ways, and it's an early warning system for incidents. In two thousand and twenty-one, we rolled out multi-factor authentication, which was which was also related to so many people connecting to the network from the outside due to the pandemic. And in 2020, we tried and then had to shelve our network redesign. And the reason we had to shelve it was because of the pandemic. It had been on our budget to begin the process in the fiscal year that ended in 2020. But once the pandemic began, all of our efforts went in towards making people productive from home and it never got off the ground. So some of the things that we're trying to address with our server and our network redesign is our current model has each server is a physically separate item and has to be restored individually. We also don't have a recovery location. In other words, if City Hall were to flood, burn down, get hit by a tornado, we don't have a standing location where we can run, where we could put a second or, or put replacement hardware in place. And we don't have any hardware for that failover, even if we did. So this server architecture that we have is, is needs to be addressed. And that has been part of the redesign that we've been trying to do for several years. So during this past, uh, past few months, we undertook this process again, once we were coming out of the pandemic and finished the phone system and some other key projects. In the fall of 2021, we issued and awarded an RFP. There was two phases to the work. Phase one was a technical and functional analysis that was done on a fixed price work. Phase two was an option for us to continue with the same vendor and contract for a second chunk of work. So at this point, we finished phase one. We have not started phase two. The recommendations from the analysis were that we should run our servers as virtualized servers on new hardware. And another part of the recommendation was also to upgrade some of our switches to get faster connectivity. So let me pause here and sort of talk about a virtualized servers, because this is, um, this is something that is sort of a little bit more theoretical in terms of grasping how it works. But I'm a visual person, so I'm using a visual metaphor here. So our current architecture is this. Imagine that we needed to get a car from point A to point B. What we have now is a single piece of hardware pulling a single server. So it's very much like analogy of a single car being towed on a single flatbed. Virtualization is this idea. We take the servers that we want to run and we put them in logical containers, is the phrase of the industry. And then a more powerful machine can do the work with many of them inside of it. And furthermore, the flexibility that we're looking at with the new setup, we would have two pieces of hardware that would share the load between them. But actually, either piece of hardware would be able to stagger along carrying the load by itself if one, we had a failure. And if we do have a hardware failure, then we can replace the hardware. And this is really the beauty of the virtualized servers. We could quickly move our entire server architecture to new hardware or even run it from the cloud. So it gives us a lot more capability to, to recover after there's been an incident. So some next steps that would lie ahead in this process, we would need to purchase the hardware and the licensing. We need to purchase and install the switches. And then we're going to engage contractual services with that vendor for a one-time effort to do this work. And that would be supporting our team, but it's just something that our team simply does not have the time to do in addition to their other responsibilities. I will be submitting a budget amendment. And I want to emphasize that the reason that I feel this is important enough to address through a budget amendment is because there are immediate benefits that we'll gain from our ability to recover and shrink our recovery time from a matter of weeks to a matter of days. And that's the most important thing for the city. The other reasons that I suggest that now's a good time for us to take this on is we have some momentum moving forward with this project, because we've completed the analysis and we're moving into phase two. And also, and we have enough of a manageable workload that we can take this on. So my final slide is answering the question. Okay, if we do this, are we safe then? And of course, the answer is no. There will always be more things that we can do, like the financial audit report. They're always made, I'm not sure we'll ever reach a point where we have no audit issues from an IT audit perspective, because there's so many new ways that we have to protect ourselves. So some of the things that we will be looking at in the, in the time ahead would be better monitoring tools, so that we're aware more real time of issues. We want to do network segmentation, where we basically break our network up into smaller pieces. And that helps us, because then if one of them is compromised, it doesn't necessarily spread to the rest. And we're looking at options that would give us more flexible security for what people can do once they sign on to the network. We're also looking into a secondary physical location, and that is part of the facility plan. We are hoping to be included with the secondary server room in one of the new fire stations. And finally, vulnerability assessments are something that we continue to do ourselves. But should we get to a point where we are looking, you know, trying to find ways to improve, there are third parties that could come in and do a vulnerability assessment for us. And that takes me through my slides. So at this point, I'll just pause and see if anybody has questions.
James.
Yeah, I'm sure Sanford knows the question I'm going to ask, which is, if we do this, make the changes, will we have a security level that will allow us to use advanced security measures under CGIS? Or will we have to stay with our basic password rules and have to change it every 90 days?
Well, if, if we do this change, so the, the problem that, so CGIS is a set of requirements that are related to criminal justice. So Criminal Justice Information Systems, CJIS, CGIS. It's kind of like HIPAA. The rule says that if you have criminal justice information, you have to treat it in special manners, much like if you have health insurance information and, and patient information. So currently, our architecture is such that everybody's on the same network, including police. So we have to hold everybody to the same level of tightness that, as we do the police. This won't necessarily change that, but it does set us up for the network segmentation. And one of the things we'd want to do with the network segmentation is put the police on a separate network, which would then allow us to put everybody else potentially in different security roles. So it sets us up for that, but this will not solve that problem.
Any other questions? Grace.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. And the first question was if we could have the slides later too.
Sure.
And then another question was about if you could help me understand a little more about the different servers, like how many there are, and I was imagining like for each department and how many networks there are currently.
Well, currently, there's one network. And for everybody.
Or I guess the hardware piece with your analogy with the big truck carrying the little cars, like how many tow trucks we have with different hardware setups, I guess now.
Yeah, right now, 15. So now, as we move forward, one of our goals is to think about what's running on each of those boxes and maybe, you know, start refining that over time. But our initial process will be a quick lift and we'll basically take each of those existing 15 servers and virtualize it and then be running them on the two boxes. And we are going to be reusing some of the hardware that we have. Some of the boxes that we're running on are still viable and we'll be finding new roles for them. But honestly, when the network analysis came back on our existing hardware, most of them were deemed end of life, meaning that the hardware is essentially no longer usable for modern practices.
Okay, so that's 15 servers on 15 separate hardwares that would go down to two main boxes.
Right.
Yeah. And then I was wondering, cost estimate, but I imagine maybe that's later on when the budget amendment comes.
It, it's in the budget amendment, but I mean, I, I believe in, in always just giving the news upfront. We're asking for $87,000, $87,120. And part of that, uh, we are contributing some money from the existing IPT budget that we had set aside for server replacements, which we will not be doing. So that is part of, we're contributing as well, but $87,120 is the additional budget amendment we're asking for.
Thank you.
Any other questions? James.
So in, in the longer term, when we talk about a secondary location, will there be a similar investment at that point to have redundancy?
No, the, the goal, at least the plan at this point is that, you know, we're buying these two boxes that are the same as each other. We would put one of them at the, the secondary location and one of them in the city building. So we would achieve, you know, physical distance, but not need to buy any new equipment. We just move one of the boxes offsite.
Thank you.
Yeah, one of the challenges we face from a, you know, because one of the, again, one of the most likely scenarios we, we think about is tornado. And one of the challenges that we face is both of the primary city buildings, being the City Hall, Fire Station One and Public Works are on the same east-west line. And so, you know, we use Public Works as a sort of backup location in some ways, but it's really not a good choice, because were tornado to come through and take out City Hall, it would probably take out Public Works too. So getting, getting it moved to one of the fire stations, get it on a different east-west line. Like I said, I'm a professional skeptic. I always got to think about the worst things that could happen.
Well, we had a tornado in 2019, just a little bit south of us, so. It happens. Any other questions?
Well, I appreciate everyone's time and I asked to be on the schedule, because it seemed like I could get a little more time for the back and forth without being on one of the later ones. So thank you all. I, I will be back if there's questions during the budget amendment process. I'll, I'll certainly be back and I'll share the slides right after this, right after the meeting.
Do you have a projected date when you'll be back with the budget amendment?
Yeah, whenever the budget amendment gets scheduled.
Okay. I also would like to thank Sanford and his team. They have made significant, as you saw, improvements to the network security over the past four years. And I can assure you, they have been relentless in training users to, um, to be very careful with what they open and what emails they respond to. So it's, it's an ongoing process and we certainly appreciate very much. And this was all done in addition, while they were supporting employees working remotely and dealing with all the other pandemic-related challenges. Thank you. Okay, we will move on. Oh, I just got a note. Budget amendment will be next week on the agenda, so this will be fresh in your minds. We'll move on to public input. And while we're getting ready for that, if Borima, if you could admit Michelle Brooks to be a panelist, she'll be speaking to the resolution that's on the agenda. Okay, if you'd like to address the Urbana City Council, please raise your hand. I see Brandy McCoy's hand up. Go ahead, Brandy. Andy, if you're speaking, we can't hear you. Brandy, can you hear us? All right, we'll come back to you, Brandy. Let's vote for Alan Axelrod.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
All righty. So this is a follow-up to my public comment from last week. Section 10 of the Stephen Edward Watts Act talks about the ability of home rural municipalities from providing services in a matter inconsistent with that act. That is why section 10 is important for your legal counsel to address when it comes to state law. Regarding federal law, as stated before, section, Article 2 of the ADA, Article 5 of the ADA, as well as the 504 Rehab Act, are all potential violations that will be investigated. On top of which, I'm being encouraged to contact the Department of Justice. I can't fully explain that yet, because I'm not the expert. I'm the local who's relaying information to you. I will be meeting with that expert to understand why that is an option that is being talked about when it comes to this police follow-up co-responder model. Again, the ask is that the City of Urbana does their homework appropriately, asking legal counsel to do their homework appropriately and follow the law when it comes to the implementation of this. More services is not a bad thing. However, services that does put people in harm's way from a systemically literate perspective is a problem. That's what this does. And it also does allow for similar things to happen in other communities. I forget which community, but in central Illinois, there is an officer-involved shooting of a disabled person. This is not something that only happens in large cities. It happens in small communities like ours too. Anyway, that's all I really have to say for tonight. Have a good one.
Okay. Let's try Brandy again.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, goodness, thank you. So sorry about that. My name is Brandy McCoy, Urbana resident. I'd like to thank the council for passing several resolutions in the past advocating for utility and eviction assistance. I hope this effort continues and you continue to push for the addressing of this issue, be it local action or calling on state or federal action. I do hope you continue to call for assistance in addition to what is currently available, which has proven to be insufficient. U.S. citizens nationwide, including here in our community, are desperate, are in desperate need of the passing of the Maintaining Access to Essential Services Act, which has sat on a death Also, the city will have a change of heart to gain a willingness to expand this program. If those that run this program are unwilling to expand, I hope the city can work to find and facilitate a similar program for workforce training, which can be expanded to fit the true needs of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is SN. Please state your name for the record.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Hello, City Council. This is Sarah Nixon. I attempted to give this comment at last week's City Council Committee of the Whole Meeting and actually at, even at a prior meeting, but didn't have enough time the first time. And last week, unfortunately, you couldn't hear me. It turned out that the microphone default factory setting had been set to mute on the device that I was using, so you couldn't hear me at all. But that's fixed now. So on behalf of all Urbana residents who value and who need you to prioritize accountable and competent policing, I want to comment on the city's decision to appoint Lieutenant Cory Coker to lead Urbana's recently formed Crisis Co-Response Team. I think my comment is going to exceed the four minutes allotted for public input, so I will likely continue the second part at a subsequent meeting. But first of all, as I understand it from their recent presentation, as I understand it from their recent presentation to the council, the CCRT is tasked with carrying out mental health checks, services and treatment liaison and follow-ups for individuals having had police contact. The idea being to de-escalate and divert mental health crises out of the criminal justice interface and into the mental health services system such as it is. Now, I truly expect that there must be several and probably many excellent police officers employed at the UPD. And I believe that among them truly exists a pool of knowledgeable, competent individuals who could bring appropriate skills, experience and insight to the role of crisis co-response team leader. Who knows, among the ranks, there may even be a stellar contender for the role. Managing psychological crises is critical work, requiring a specific skill set, a relevant educational background with focused training in mental health, racial bias, gender bias, trauma-informed policing, as well as personal qualities marked by demonstrated respect, sensitivity, empathy, compassion, and superb judgment toward clients slash persons of interest, as well as proven ability and mastery in diff- diffusing rapid-paced volatile situations where the moving parts include individuals who may be experiencing severe distress, trauma, disorientation, dissociation, rage and/or fear. Now, city council lieutenant Coker's career has been marked not by distinction in the above areas, but by scandal in those same areas. No one in local politics can help to be aware that James Cory Coker has repeatedly violated the public's trust, not least when he helped batter with two other Urbana police officers under his supervision, an innocent Urbana resident, young woman of color in the street on Good Friday twenty. I am. I was going to quote from some news media uh, reporting uh, about that incident and related uh, subsequent events, but I will hold off and I will start my um, comment at uh, the next meeting uh, here. So thanks for your time.
Okay, does anyone else wish to address the Urbana City Council? There are no more hands raised. Thank you very much. We'll move on to council input and communications. Does anyone on the council want to respond or provide communication? You have up to three minutes to speak. Mary Alice.
Um, I I just wanted to say, and perhaps I should have said it during the presentation, how much I appreciate the um, Elizabeth Hannan's group of people and Sheila Dodd. It's really nice not to have to be reactive um, and allow us time to work on other city business and not worry about our finances and how well those systems are running. So I I just wanted to publicly thank both of those groups for the excellent work that they've done this year.
Thank you. Any other council member comments? Grace.
Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to say thank you to all of the staff that will come to the priorities planning meetings that we've been having and those who, um, you know, did not attend as well, and that I look forward to working on some of our strategic goals and also hearing from the public when we have that version published. I hope that the public will have a chance to review and give some input. I know it's council priorities, but I think always council being representatives of the public, and so I'm always happy to hear from them directly as well. I think that it's difficult work, uh, working together and finding common grounds and understanding each other's perspectives, especially coming into a bit of a whirlwind with this new term. Um, so I just wanted to say that my intention with staff and administration is um, trying to always keep in mind serving the people of Urbana and that power structure and working together with all of our branches of government and all of the staff to try and best serve the people of Urbana. And I'm looking forward to executing some of our strategic goals and um, just wanted to say that I appreciate that and I look forward to sharing that draft with the public and continuing to work on it and then fulfill those goals.
Anyone else? Don't see any council members. I would like to respond to two of the comments made. One, the comments regarding the um, CCRT. I will repeat what I said last week. The city of Urbana is in compliance with state statute, in compliance with section ten, section thirty, and every other section of that statute. I have another supplemental memo to send out um, either tonight or first thing tomorrow morning that provides council with a link to the complete statute. You can read it for yourself. But the city of Urbana is in compliance. And secondly, to the speaker who alleged that a member of the Urbana Police Department battered a member of the public, that is patently false. Absolutely false. Okay, we will move on to unfinished business. We don't have any. We'll move on to reports of the standing committee, and that would be from council member Chris Evans.
Okay, uh, this is from last week, uh, the committee of the whole. We sent to this meeting one resolution, so I'm assuming there's one item on the consent agenda, and that is resolution number uh, two thousand twenty-two dash oh, uh, zero one dash zero zero one R, a resolution approving a collective bargaining agreement with the American Federation of State, County and Municipal Employees, the AFL-CIO, council thirty-one, local thirteen thirty-one, and does Michelle Brooks want to do another presentation?
You'll need a second for that first.
Okay, all right, yeah, okay. Yeah, that's the motion.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Moved by Chris, seconded by Mary Alice, and uh, Michelle is here. Michelle, want to go ahead?
Sure, um, I don't really have much to add on to what um, I, what I said last week or the memo that was much more detailed than last week. Today was just an update advising of the reformatted contract, but I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone might have.
Doesn't look like we have any questions. All right, well, the clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
At motion passes. Thank you, Michelle. Thank you to all who served um, both representing um, city of Urbana management as well as the labor union and their representatives. This was a very um, productive process, and I think we have um, a contract that that's actually excellent for both the city and for the employees. So I appreciate all the work that went into that. Okay, we'll move on to, thank you, Chris. We'll move on to reports of special committees. There aren't any, any reports of officers. Carol?
Yeah, sorry. I'm having a little trouble with my video there. Yeah, um, we had, uh, I've heard questions a few times about what the next steps are with the RFP for the Public Safety Review, and I'm meeting with a couple of staff members this week. Um, I think we'd like to just offer a few edits to the scope of work to make, um, to make sure that you're getting what you want. So we're going to make a few things more explicit, and um, you'll see an edited version then after we meet. So um, I'm hoping that it'll only take one session with staff members to to get through that, but then we'll be ready to put it into the RFP format and we'll share that with you as well.
Okay. Any other uh, staff reports or announcements? I had a couple. One is, oh. Did you have a question on this, Charisse? You're muted.
Just really quickly, I noticed that Cat Trotter is um, in the attendees and not in the panelists, and maybe she has something to say, I don't know.
She's going to be presenting the next item under new business, but yes, Cat needs to be admitted as a panelist. And let me see if there's any other staff members working with her. I don't see any. Buddy, thanks, Charisse. Um, a couple of announcements. One, I'm really pleased to announce that Dr. Carmen Franks, P.E., has joined um, the city as an assistant city engineer. You got some information on her background last fall, but her starting date was starting time was last week, so we're really delighted that she has joined the engineering staff at the city of Urbana, and it's just wonderful to to be staffed, fully staffed again in that department, at least in the engineering end of things. We're working on some of the others as well, so we welcome Carmen to the city. Secondly, I wanted to report to you that um, you know, the city is no exception from Omicron. It's raging all around us and through us currently. About ten percent of our workforce is out due to COVID, either from positive tests, some exposure, or people being home caring for household members. Last paid period, we paid out about nine hundred hours of COVID leave. This is leave that's been created to um, to to pay people while they're out with COVID-related issues, so they aren't using sick leave or vacation leave. So that was nine hundred hours of COVID leave. And the fact that the schools, some of the schools are closed, like Urbana Middle School closed today, daycares, I mean, it's it's having a tremendous impact on on staff and um, but the ten percent out to COVID is of course in addition to people out with other illnesses, with duty-related injuries, on vacation, on military leave, et cetera. So our um, our staff is severely impacted right now with COVID as just about everyone in town. And I also wanted to let you know that um, at least Carl Health, I'm not sure if the other hospitals as well, but Carl Health is now breaking down patients in the hospital as to their vaccination status. So today, for example, there are twenty-six um, patients in the Carl ICU. One hundred percent of those are unvaccinated. Of the two hundred six people, um, COVID nineteen patients that are hospitalized at Carl, sixty-six percent are unvaccinated, twenty-seven percent have one or two vaccine doses, and eight percent are fully vaxxed and boosted. So this is a, you know, striking um, evidence of the effectiveness of the vaccine and especially of the booster right now. So again, um, the message is get vaccinated, get boosted, wear at least KN ninety-five masks, avoid large gatherings and continue to take the precautions that we've been taking all along. But the number one message is the um, the effectiveness of the vaccinations in protecting people and protecting our healthcare system, and frankly, protecting essential services in all of our um, public and private realm, including the city, the schools, everywhere. It's it's critical right now. Um, I also want to thank Public Health has been providing the city with rapid tests, and our our guardian angel over there is Brandon Moline. So if you know Brandon, just um, give give him a, don't give him a hug right now, but just give him a virtual hug, because he's just been our um, contact at Public Health and has made sure that we have the rapid tests that we need, because that's how we can screen employees when they come, some of the employees when they come to work. So so it's um, we're doing our best. This is a real hard time for everybody. Okay, we will move on to new business. The first item is ordinance twenty-two-two dash zero one dash zero zero one, which is an ordinance approving a major variance for a front porch at fourteen oh one Perkins Road. Um, that's ZDA case twenty-twenty-one MA J O eight. And Cat is the property owner here that needs to be admitted?
Uh, Michelle Lorenz should be um, representing on behalf of the applicant.
Okay.
And I believe she's in the attendees list.
Yes, okay. Borima, can you admit Michelle Lorenz, please? Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
All right, uh, this is a request by Brian Kessler on behalf of Angel Carrato for a major variance to allow a front porch to encroach ten feet into the required twenty-five-foot front yard at fourteen oh one Perkins Road. Uh, staff finds that the case meets five of the six variance criteria. Um, and at the meeting on December fifteenth, the zoning board of appeals voted unanimously to forward the request to city council with a recommendation of approval. This is a location map of the property. It's located on the southeast corner of Perkins Road and Eastern Avenue. The property is in Champaign County. However, it is under an active annexation agreement that was approved in two thousand and ten. Um, and the applicant purchased the property in two thousand and fifteen. The requested variance would allow the applicant to construct a front porch on the west side of the house in the required front yard. The average front yard depth on the block of Eastern Avenue is sixty-five feet deep, so the maximum twenty-five-foot front yard is required. This is a zoning map. Um, the property is owned R-three single and two-family residential under the active annexation agreement. Uh, that zoning does not show up on this map because it is outside of city limits, but it is written into that annexation agreement. The adjacent properties are all zoned county R-three, which is two-family residential. Uh, there's a mobile home park to the northeast that is owned R-five manufactured home park. The property to the south, fifteen oh five Eastern Avenue, is also under an annexation agreement and is owned city R-three, single and two-family residential. Nearby are other residences, a small office building, uh, a telecommunications tower across the street as well. This is the county zoning map, so as I stated before, um, it's surrounded by county R-three, uh, and you see the manufactured home park up to the right corner. The applicant requests the variance to add a front porch on the west side of the house. Uh, this is a photo of the west side of the house. Um, and the front porch will encroach ten feet in the required twenty-five-foot front yard. Um, you would like to install a fourteen-foot wide concrete patio with a roof covering. Uh, the porch will extend fifty-two feet along the western face of the house, and the roof will extend another twenty-six feet to cover a new concrete driveway. Uh, this is a picture of the north side of the house. They couldn't reasonably put the porch on this side, and it's requested on the west side. Um, so that's where the variance would apply to. Um, and here's a better photo of the west side of the house. Porches are permitted to encroach five feet into required front yards. Uh, this proposed porch would encroach ten feet into the required twenty-five-foot front yard, so variance would be required. This is a site plan, showing where the porch would be, uh, as well as the new concrete driveway. The, and here's another uh, site plan. This is kind of the floor plan of the porch. Um, so you're looking at it, the top of the screen would be north, um, and this is on the west side of the house. Here's an elevation as well. Uh, this block of Eastern Avenue is approximately one-third of a mile long with front yard depths ranging from seven feet deep to over two hundred feet deep, uh, which results in a, in a drastically inflated front yard of sixty-five feet, or average front yard of sixty-five feet. Um, it's skewed by hundred-foot-plus front yards, and if the minimum fifteen-foot required front yard applied to this property, no variance would be required for the front porch. So this uh, oblique shows the top of the screen being east, uh, so you can see kind of uneven development along the block. Um, shown a little bit better here with with pretty substantial front yards in some of these properties in the middle of the map. Um, to summarize, staff found that the application meets five of the six variance criteria. The variance will not serve as a special privilege as the remainder of the block has not been developed to the standards of the Urbana zoning ordinance. Uh, the previous property owner entered into an annexation agreement and built the house in two thousand and ten, and the petitioner bought the property in two thousand and fifteen, so the situation was not created by the petitioner. Um, several houses along the block already encroached into the twenty-five-foot required front yard, so allowing the applicant to construct a porch in the required front yard here would not uh, alter the essential character of the neighborhood. And the front porch will be fourteen feet wide and encroach ten feet. So the city council has the following options on the request of major variance: approve the ordinance, approve the ordinance with certain terms and conditions, or deny the ordinance. Um, and as I stated, at the December fifteenth And as I stated, at the December 15th meeting, the zoning board of appeals voted to forward the case to city council with a recommendation of approval with one condition, that the front porch would generally conform to the submitted site plan in ordinance attachment A. Staff concurs with that recommendation and I can take any technical questions. And Michelle can take any questions for the applicant as well.
I would ask if Michelle had any comments she'd like to make about the project before we do the questions, if that's okay, Ken. Okay. Go ahead, Michelle.
I think Kat covered pretty much everything. Yeah, that was, that was pretty good.
All right, any questions for Kat? James?
Yeah, when I, when I looked at this property through the, the wonder of Google SiteView, I noticed that the, the level of the door has like a five-step porch, a five-step thing up to the porch. And I was looking at the site plan. It wasn't clear to me, was there any discussion of how the porch that they're putting in and the, how they're going to manage that change of height? Because it doesn't look like five steps if you look at it in the picture, the site plan picture. It looks like two steps, maybe?
Yeah, I, I know there were a few steps shown on the site plan. I'll actually defer to Michelle on that. They, Michelle and Brian Kessler are the architects on the project. So they might be able to speak better to how the, the change in elevation will be handled.
Yes, there should be enough steps in order to meet that elevation. But if not, that's an easy fix that wouldn't really change the variance request.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Kat or the applicant? Grace?
Thank you. First one, first of all, thank you for the presentation and I always love putting together or looking through the packets with pictures of the maps. So thank you for including those. And I was wondering if there was some public input meeting? Saying none means there was none, is that right?
Yeah, no formal public input. I took one question very early in the process from a neighbor who was just curious about what was being proposed here. And I forwarded on the site plan, but that was the only communication we received.
Okay, thank you. And then I think I just misheard something about a 26-foot cover for the porch. Was that just width covering the new porch? And somehow I heard like extending past it, coming out of the house. Is that right?
Yeah, so that width is probably not the right word that I should use. So the porch itself will be, I believe it's about 52 feet long. And then there will be a new proposed concrete driveway, which is shown on that site plan. The porch covering will extend over the new driveway, but the same encroachment will be maintained across the length of the porch and the roof covering. And I can pull up the site plan again if that would be helpful.
Maybe the elevation?
Sure thing.
Because then the roof is going to be more than 15 feet into the thing, but that's just considered driveway.
So no, the roof itself will not protrude any further than the porch itself. The same encroachment will be consistent across the entire elevation. So this roof is shown here. It covers the porch up to this point, which is about where those stairs and the door are. And then the driveway is shown here. And the roof will extend where the dotted line is across the driveway as well. So it'll be essentially kind of like covered parking for that portion of the driveway. And that same roof will extend across the porch.
I see. Thank you. Yeah, that helps clarify. And I just was noticing a different name for the applicants in the zoning board meeting. I don't know if that was a different like household member or something that came to that one.
Yeah, there have been quite a few people on the project team. Michelle Lorenz and Brian Kessler are part of the architect team working with the homeowner. Angel Carrato is the homeowner of 1401 Perkins. And Marley Carrato had attended the zoning board of appeals meeting on behalf of her. I believe it's her dad, but Michelle might be able to provide some insight there.
Actually not sure about their relation, but yeah, Brian and I are the ones who put together the drawings and the application. But Angel is the property owner.
Okay, and Marley, another family representative too. Okay.
Yes.
Any other questions? Charisse?
I, I just wanted, I just wanted to get some clarification, kind of like, like Grace. Because looking at the plans, okay, so it looks like the, it'll be a covered porch. With an, it's a porch with an awning and it's going to extend to also make basically like a carport situation?
Oh, yeah, somewhat. That's, I guess that's what I would consider it.
Okay, that, that's, and, and so the steps will come from the side instead of from the front? Is also, okay, what I'm noticing. Oh, okay. I just wanted to understand how that, how that was going to be. And I'm assuming that's basically so that regarding the sunlight and the heat and so on and so forth. Okay, thank you.
And in your packet, the front porch site plan shows the front view of that and it's a pretty clear picture of how that'll work. It's G001, the page in your, the plan page. Okay, any other questions? Could we get a motion?
Oh, yeah. I'll move, approve of ordinance number 2022-01-001, an ordinance approving a major variance front porch at 1401 Perkins Road.
Is there a second?
No, go ahead. Go ahead, Jaya.
Well, it's three of us, I guess.
All right, we'll give it to Jaya. Any further discussion? Will? I heard, I see a microphone being unmuted. Okay, not, okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes. Last item on the agenda is appointment to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission. I'm pleased to submit the appointment of Bruce Michelson. He's called Urbana home for over 45 years and has had a long time interest in bicycling safely, locally. During the tenure of Mayor Jeff Markland, and that goes back one to three mayors, he chaired the Urbana Citizens Advisory Commission on Bicycle Programs. And their major accomplishment, and it was a huge one, was replacement of more than 400, what they called suicide storm grates, which in the old days, these were grates that were parallel to the road and you would be riding along on your bike, especially the narrow tire bikes that were common back in the 80s and 90s. And they'd trap your tire and you'd go flying. And I can tell you from personal experience, that's exactly what happened. So there were over 400 of these grates in the city and Bruce was instrumental in getting these things replaced. And that greatly improved the bicycling experience in Urbana and kind of was the forerunner of many of the improvements that we see coming out of B-PAC today. He's particularly interested in the rising use of electric bicycles and that has the advantage of attracting more people to bicycle basically year round. But, and he also acknowledges that Urbana has to look at the feasibility, safety, and public work measures that will be necessary to address this change in community commuting and recreational cycling. So anyway, he's the retired director of the Campus Honors Program at the University of Illinois and a retired professor of American Literature in the Department of English. Needless to say, he's, he's got many years of experience living in this community, bicycling in this community. And the interest in e-bikes is especially important. We are also an age-friendly community, not to, not to say anything about Bruce's age, but he does have years of experience bicycling and e-bikes are going to be a huge, I think a huge factor in the, in the coming, coming years. So anyway, I'm very pleased to appoint him to B-PAC for a term effective immediately through June 30th, 2025. Is there a motion? Charisse?
I would move to appoint Bruce Michelson to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission, term ending June 30th, 2025.
Thank you. Annie, is there a second?
A second.
Moved by Charisse, seconded by Jaya. Further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Quisenberry?
Diane, I think Grace throws her hand.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I'm not super important. Was just going to say thank you for the nomination. He seems like a good fit and I appreciate having that background information and the term ending date. And happy to see people who are interested in qualifying and serving on our commissions. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes. No further business. This meeting is adjourned.
I have a question.
Yeah.
For next week, Monday is MLK Day and I was wondering what, what the plan is for city council. Are we moving to Tuesday?
Yes, it's, it's an official city holiday. I thank you for reminding me. It's an official city holiday. And in that case, we have our council meeting, committee of the whole meeting on Tuesday at 7:00. And it's a packed agenda. So stay well, please. All right, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.